And the mics are always on.
Guys got you?
All right, we're ready.
All right, welcome to the Wednesday, October 7, Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Astorian, Commissioner Landergan.
President.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Minuchin.
Here.
Chair Protem Yosayyan.
Here. Can we have the report regarding posting of the agenda, please?
Yeah, the agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 30, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Great. Will everyone please stand up for -- follow me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item is approval of minutes, which we're gonna postpone to the next meeting, so we can have the majority of the people at the last meeting here. Oral communication, I don't believe I have a card for oral communication. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on any matter of the -- before us today, please fill out a card and write on top of the card which address, which project you are interested to speak with, and please submit it to Ms. Laura Sotler right here. Next item is zoning appeals, no new business, no old business. Planning Commission items, new business for location 463-465 Salem Street, and applicant is PFL Investment Group LLC. Do we have a staff report for this?
We do, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The first item before you this evening is tentative track map 72800. It's a request to construct a 10-unit condominium, or a request to construct 10 new condominium units on an approximately 14,000-square-foot site located at 463-465 Salem Street. Plans for the project are posted behind you. The subject site is located in the R-1650 zone. The general plan land use designation is medium-high-density residential. The property is surrounded by sites also zoned R-1650 and developed with single and multifamily residential units. The site has approximately 100 feet of frontage on Salem and is 140 feet deep. The site is flat and the project is currently under construction. Nine of the 10 units are single-level residences; the remainder is a three-level townhouse. The two- and three-bedroom units range in size from 1,228 square feet to 1,636 square feet. The subterranean parking contains 28 spaces for the residential units and guests. Excuse me, the Design Review Board adopted the negative declaration regarding this project and approved the project on November 21 of 2013. The project is consistent with the general plan elements as outlined in the staff report, and the site is physically suitable for the proposed type of development. Based on this evidence, staff recommends that Planning Commission approve tentative track map 72800 with the conditions contained in the motion.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Questions? Let me see, we have one speaker. Haik Marderosian.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Haik Marderosian. I'm the track engineer. My address is 1545 North Verdugo Road, Glendale. As you know, this project has been approved back in 2013, and through the plan check and building process, we obtained our building permit, and currently it's under construction. It serves for 10 condominium units with 28 parking spaces via one wide driveway through Salem Street. I don't have much to say, except I read all the conditions, and we fully comply with all the conditions. If Commissioners have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay. Do you want to have a question? Okay, thank you, Mr. Marderosian. We don't have any other speaker cards. Do we have any questions for staff before we get to deliberations? No?
I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing. So we have a motion?
Actually, silly.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing again.
This is with respect to the motion, members of the Commission, Mr. Chair. The motion on this should add an additional provision, and that would be at K, and that would be making reference to the resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration, just that it has been previously adopted, and, sorry, I had my finger in the materials right where that was, and would make reference to the date that the resolution was adopted and the -- by whom.
So would that be number 38, or?
That would be on your motion. You have A through J. Do you just add K to make reference to that resolution adopted by the Design Review Board on November 21, 2013? So it would be the adoption of the motion as amended. Thank you.
I'm ready to make the --
Great, thank you. Close the public hearing. You have a motion, please?
Can I make that upon consideration of tentative track number 72800, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative track, that tentative track number 72800 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 37 additional conditions listed below, and the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings of fact. And reference to the A through J, we now have K, which has been saved by the city attorney, making the resolution adoptive on November 21, 2013, negative deck adopted by the Design Board.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
For roll call, we have Commissioner Landergan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Minuchin.
Aye.
Chair Protem Yosayyan.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is 4201 Pennsylvania Avenue. Applicant is Ganji Development LLC, and it's for a tentative subdivision map. Can we have a -- do we have a staff report?
Good evening again. The next item on your agenda this evening is tentative track map 73651. It's a request to construct 28 new townhouse condominium units on an approximately 71,223 square-foot site located at 4201 Pennsylvania Avenue. Actually, let me pull the plans out. Now they are behind you. All right. The subject site is located in R-2250 zone. The general plan land use designation for the site is medium-density residential. Immediately north of the site, the property is also zoned R-2250 and developed with both single and multifamily units. To the west, adjacent property is zoned R-1 and developed with single-family units. The two 10 freeways located south of the property, and then commercial vacant land and single-family development is located east of the site in the county of Los Angeles, not City of Glendale. The site has approximately 100 feet of frontage on Pennsylvania Avenue and approximately is 745 feet deep. The site slopes down from the north toward the freeway. The 28 residential units will be in 10 separate buildings. There are three floor plans, which will range from about 1,900 square feet to about 2,200 square feet. Each contain three bedrooms and either three or four bathrooms. Each unit also has an attached two-car garage, and the 79 parking spaces are within either the private garages for each of the units or along Ensenal Avenue. The currently proposed project is similar to a project previously proposed on the site. If you may recall, related to the previous project, the planning hearing officer approved variances in a parking reduction for the previous project. The variances were for not providing subterranean or semi-subterranean parking, for interior setbacks, and for exceeding floor area ratio. The parking reduction permit enabled some of the required parking for the project to be provided off-site. In this case, it's along Ensenal Avenue. These approvals are still valid for the present case. The Design Review Board approved a final mitigated negative declaration in 2003 for a 23-unit project that was never built. An addendum to the mitigated negative declaration was prepared addressing changes from the previous project with regard to this project, and there were no new mitigation measures proposed for the currently proposed project. The project is consistent with the general plan elements. As outlined in the staff report, the site is suitable for multifamily development, and based on the evidence, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve tentative track map 73651 with the conditions contained in the motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? I, in my staff report, I had a second addendum, mitigated negative declaration. Is there, was there a first addendum?
The first addendum was for the most recently approved, or most recently proposed project on the site.
And these variances that were previously approved, is there a certain time limit that they're good for?
They're good for two years, and they were granted an extension for one more year about four months ago.
And I didn't see a list of findings for the variances, or was that provided to us?
No, I didn't include the variances, the variance findings.
Is that available?
I believe I can get them, yes.
Great. Well, we have two, we have a few speakers. I believe we have two speakers who are the applicant, and do we share a time, or 15 minutes for the applicant?
They have 15 minutes.
Okay. So I believe the engineer who worked on it and the applicant, they're together, they --
Together with 15 minutes.
Okay, so Mr. Mark Ganji and Mr. George Bogosian, you'll have 15 minutes you can share amongst the two of you. Thank you.
Hi, members of the Planning Commission chair, good evening. We're very, very happy to bring this project in front of you tonight. This project was really designed based on the North Glendale Community Plan, and after we did several meetings of community outreach and working with the community to get something that we were able to get through Design Review on, and since Design Review, we've worked diligently with the staff to bring the project in front of you, in front of you this evening. The project was originally part of a land swap, which was owned by City of Glendale, and we, there was a land swap with a lot of hillside property, and so that was the original property that led us to this property. And it's always been thought of that this would be a great site for owner-occupied housing that would be, you know, something in between a, the single-family houses that's surrounded and the larger apartment block. So it's really seen as a transition-type property because we have no building that has more than three units in it. So there's eight buildings that are triplexes, and there's two duplexes in the project. So I'm here tonight with Matt Ganji, who's our Director of Acquisitions for Ganji Development, and also George and Eric Bogosian, who have led the engineering on the project, so we're available to answer any specific questions that you might have. Thank you, and I'll introduce George now.
Thanks.
I can interject real quickly. I have one copy of the decision letter for the variance and parking reduction. Do each of you want a copy, or I can just pass this around?
Okay. You could just pass it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Commission. My name is George Bogosian of Bogosian and Associates. I'm the engineer of this project, and actually the subdivision engineer. Our address is 1111 North Brand Boulevard, Suite 202, Glendale. This project being a 28-unit condominium, the staff really gave full description of what this project is before you. I don't have much to say, except, most important, that we have reviewed all of the conditions, which we have 69 conditions for approval of this tract. We have reviewed, and the owners of this project, the subdividers, will fully comply with the requirements of this throughout the departments involved. And beyond that, I would like to see if there is any questions that you may have, engineering questions, I'll be very glad to answer you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from Commissioners? Thank you. Okay, we have two other speakers in the public. First one is Bill Weisman.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Protem, Planning Commission members, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Bill Weisman from Far North Glendale, and actually Sharon and I are approaching an anniversary next year in Far North Glendale. This coming May will mark 30 years since we've lived in that neighborhood, and in that entire 30 years, the property at 4201 Pennsylvania has been an empty lot. Developing it has been problematic for several reasons. It's immediately next to the freeway. It's a long, narrow lot that slopes downward. There have been numerous attempts in the past to try and develop it that have not been successful for various reasons. The most recent of these attempts was by the Olson Company several years ago, and in spite of the fact that they took a lot of time and did a lot of community outreach and really devoted a lot of resources to their proposed project, it ended up being denied. I believe it was Design Review turned them down. They appealed to the city council and were also turned down, and at that point, they abandoned the project. There are a great deal of differences between that project that most of the neighbors did not approve of and the one that is before you today. I think you'll find that a great deal more attention has been paid to the design of the buildings in terms of mass and scale, much more attractive and acceptable than what the Olson proposal consisted of. I think that it's important to note that the Ganji Company has made a real effort to include some cutting-edge sustainability features in their development. One of these is they are going to try and implement a gray-water system for landscape irrigation. This is really a very ambitious and time-consuming and expensive thing to do. It's not just running, you know, a pipe from your washing machine out to the landscaping. There's a great deal of infrastructure that's required in order for it to be sanitary and for it to meet the California Plumbing Code, which is also the Glendale Plumbing Code. I think that the Ganji Company has shown some very good imagination and out-of-the-box thinking. One of the big issues with the Olson project and previous iterations of this project was that the Glendale Fire Department was requiring an access gate at the west end of the property. The neighbors and the single-family homes in that area had a real problem with that because it would have been an ingress and egress point for people to come to and fro into their neighborhood, which has very narrow streets and no sidewalks. And the issue of space for fire trucks to be able to turn around, I understand, has now been resolved, and so the original gate at the west end of the property can be replaced by a block wall, and now the issues that the neighbors to the west had are hopefully addressed by that modification to the project. There is also attention being paid to possible future use of solar panels on the roofs in terms of the buildings being pre-wired or have other kind of infrastructure in place to support that. And so I'm here today to ask the Planning Commission to approve the subdivision and to allow these units to be sold as condominiums rather than as apartments. I think this is going to enhance the property values in our neighborhood with an ownership situation there rather than a rental situation, and I want to thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next speaker is Mr. Jim Kingsley.
I'm Jim Kingsley. I'm a resident on Ensenal, the area west of the project, and everything we see here looks good, fine, what they, the work that's been done is good, except I haven't seen no concrete evidence of what's going to happen at the west end of this property with the access to Ensenal. I've heard a lot of promises and ideas, but nothing, even on the map that's here right now, it doesn't show whether it's going to be a wall and a gate, a wall, a bush and a gate, or a solid wall. It doesn't, it's not there, and I don't want to see the process go another step where somebody thinking, well, it's a done deal, and then all of a sudden, we find we have either traffic, vehicular traffic, or pedestrian traffic coming onto our street. Our street is, quite frankly, in poor condition. We've had water main breaks in the last two years. The actual width of Maryland toward the bottom of the street is like 12 feet of paved road, when the parking situation is horrible on the street. If there's access either by vehicles or pedestrians, they're going to park there, and they're going to go in, and that'll exacerbate things. On this street that is next to the school, it's just not a good deal. So I think before this moves on, that this needs to be addressed a lot more than it is, traffic patterns on Ensenal, Maryland with respect to Lincoln School, and possible improvements to that corner, or possibly the whole street. Thanks.
Thank you. It's the last speaker card. Do we have, staff want to respond? Any of the comments?
It's my understanding that the applicant has been working with engineering and fire department regarding the gate-wall situation. If you look on the tentative track map behind you, there is a fire department, like a T-turnaround proposed, two-thirds way.
We'll get there in a second.
So about two-thirds down the track map?
Sure.
It's right here.
Okay. And is Ensenal supposed to be closed, or not, the west end of the entrance?
There was supposed to be a gate or a wall. It's been discussed through the Olson Company, the Olson Company project, et cetera, right in this area to prevent access or traffic.
So can people, residents, enter through that western portion or not?
Here?
Yeah.
Now, I think there's like a gate there now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we need, I'd like the engineer, because it looks to me like there's utilities that still have to be accessed.
Should we do rebuttal periods, so they have the answer for it, or?
Well, at this point, he's still providing basic information and responding to your questions, so you can invite the engineer and the architect up and ask them to explain.
Okay, great, thank you.
Again, George Bogosian. The west end of the property will be provided a gate. I don't know presently if there is a gate or not, but definitely it will be provided a gate, and because of that, the city will close that by a gate, and for that reason, city requires a turnaround, especially for anyone who comes to Ensenal by mistake, wants to back up. There is an easement for that purpose, if I can show you on the map.
Sure.
This is the last driveway, actually, and we have to provide enough backup, 25 feet minimum, so if somebody's coming here, this is blocked, has to back up and then leave, and by backing up, usage of this backup, in order in the future, this owner doesn't give any problem. That's why it will be an easement to, for backing up as a, given to the city. On the final map, it will be recorded, and it will be part of it. And at the same time, we have, this is for turnaround for the trucks, fire trucks, as they come up, and we have checked with the fire department, everything is okay with them, with their satisfaction, and it is all with dark dash line, shows the fire backup system, and it will be all painted red along the curb line, and this also will be on the final map, recorded for this purpose. And definitely, the city engineer is present here. If you wish to ask him to confirm that, there will be a gate for sure to block, but they will not be able to put a block wall because it is still a public road, and the city does not have that right unless this is vacated, but they will be blocking for sure.
So it's a permanently blocked gate?
Correct.
Got it.
And, oh, by the way, there was a question about the usage of utilities that we have to extend from here. There is also a condition, and there is a condition also city has provided for this backup, also a condition, that when we extend all the pipelines and all the utilities, and before putting this gate in here, we have to provide fully information to the city with video that we have done everything without harming the area, fully.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Ganji, architect. I'd like to add, on the previous iteration of this project, there was a gate at the west end proposed, but the difference was, is there was no turnaround provided, and so the fire department, let's say that they did pull into the site, they would use that gate as access to get back out again. So when we met with the community, everyone to the west of our project, everyone was concerned about what would be, what would happen with, you know, with that gate, and would be people be parking and walking over or using that as an entrance. Our position has always been, we don't have any interest in accessing Ensenal from the west of our project, and after we met with the neighbors and they had a strong opposition to any access. And after we met with the neighbors and they had a strong opposition to any access from it, then we said, okay, well, we'll take this up and try to ensure that there will be no access from that side. So as George has pointed out, we've provided the fire department with all their turnarounds and stuff. It is city property because it's a, it's a public, or it's a paper street, but as far as we're concerned, there is no need for them to have access on that side. And if they would allow us to put up a wall, we'd put up a wall there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any?
Can I ask, Mr. Ganges, may I ask you one last question? So I'm looking through the conditions, and there's several conditions. I'm pleased that you are doing some stormwater management. And I see that on a condition too, that the Public Works Department has put forward is that the existing sanitary sewer downstream may not be able to take this, and you would pay an impact fee. But you're still trying to accommodate that runoff, am I correct? Because you have to take the runoff from Ensonal, too.
Right, right. So their issue is with the sanitary sewer?
Yes.
And I guess there needs to be a sewer study done to see about the capacity, is what that condition is for. I'm not sure if that's a standard-type condition on those projects. On the, on our side, on the gray water, you know, we think we could radically cut the amount of items going into that stormwater by using our gray water. And on our project, because the ground floor has a garage and a half-bath, all the bedrooms are on the second floor. So we started looking at, thinking, if we took the gray water from the second and third floor, it wouldn't be as difficult as trying to take it from the ground floor.
Of course.
And would be something that we could really explore and try to do. We think, we think it should, we think it should be and probably will be in the future a requirement to use gray water in landscape areas. It seems like, just seems like a very good idea. So, yeah, we're very interested in pursuing that.
And you have that slope behind you off of the freeway. You might be able to capture.
Yeah. No, it's kind of, it's kind of ideal, the setup for it. And also the way that the units all run from north to south. It'd be easy to run the piping back there.
Good solar orientation. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have a requirement, a condition for the gate on the west?
No, I couldn't find it. We can add.
Is that something we need to add?
If it's up to the fire department, they're the ones who will take a look and see if they need, what their need is for a crash gate. In the past, they've always provided, I believe it's a public access easement that runs across that site. Roger, you can correct me. I know you know the project a lot better than I do. But I believe that that's the requirement, the reason that they have a gate is they don't want people to go through. But it is a public access easement. They need to get to it in an emergency, they can. So you can.
That's basically correct.
Where is the, I'm sorry. Mr. Kiesel, where is the comment from the fire department that you referenced? I couldn't find it.
It was in, is this the findings?
That's the variance.
I believe it was, their comments were in the variance.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
In the variance findings?
The first variance?
Uh, yes.
I'm so glad you provided it to us.
This one?
That's the decision letter. Yeah, it was their comments regarding the variance and the parking reduction.
And so we would not have to repeat that condition?
Correct.
Do we reference this being based upon the variances provided? That would not be a condition? It just goes with the land? This approval is, can we tie it to the variance?
Well, this project utilizes the variances that were approved and are still active. So.
But it doesn't say that in the motion?
That it still needs the variances?
No, it doesn't.
Let me, let me see.
You're saying that you should make the reference to the variances? So what you want?
We can certainly add a condition that states that the tenant, one of the conditions that, of this tentative map approval, is that all conditions in the variance and the parking reduction be adhered to.
So the, one of the variance, I guess, the findings for the parking reduction permit says that parking reduction permit to not provide all required parking on the property?
Correct.
To be provided on Ensonal Avenue right-of-way immediately adjacent to the property?
Correct.
Which right-of-way is that, if I'm referring to?
So, this is sort of the project site, although from my pointer above is still public right-of-way. And there are several parking stalls that are on the public right-of-way that are required parking for this development. And so the approval of the parking reduction allowed basically not all required parking to be parked on-site. And the required parking is off-site right up here.
Got it. Not on the, not on the street.
No, it's not, it's not referencing this Ensonal here. It's referencing up here. And there were some conditions related to not being able to reserve or designate parking up here for particular units because this is still public. So there were one or two conditions in this, in the subdivision that dealt with that.
But that, that's, that strip of land is within operative part of the project? In other words?
Well, it's within the project in that some of the required parking.
There's a wall around it that throws it into the project.
Right, right, right.
If anybody looks at it, it looks like it's part of the project.
Correct. If anybody looks at this when this is done?
Yeah.
It will all look like one project, although this northern part up here is actually city right-of-way.
So if you have cars parked along the top?
Yep.
Will fire still be able to access?
Yeah.
It looks like the fire, the diagram for the fire, the trucks?
Right.
Going in, it looks like it goes into that where the cars would be parked, right?
No, there's, the parking spaces are here.
Okay.
And this is the travel lane right here. It looks.
It's hard to tell on our copy, but.
Well, there's about a 25-foot strip of land that includes the parking slips and additional area for a, I'm assuming, a fire vehicle, A-class vehicle to pass.
It's 30 feet. There's five feet here and 25 there, so it's 30 feet from, yeah. That should be plenty.
That includes the, it would be sort of the width of the parking stall.
Right. It includes the slip and additional land upon which a vehicle could access whatever it was just here.
Right. But that's what some of those conditions deal with. The parking spaces and some of the other improvements that are actually, will be on public property, not the actual site of the development.
Can we go back to that variance question? I think we have a, this has been, sorry, I'm having a hard time talking. This has been.
Did you have a comment?
Comment?
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I think you got your answer from Roger, that it can be added as a condition, the reference to the existing conditions that already apply to the property as a consequence of the variance approvals, but no harm in making reference to those as within a condition.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have other questions? No? No? Okay. We are, can we take more comments from the public?
Yes.
We can't, if they've already spoken.
You can hold the hearing open. You want to, it's a due process issue, want to give people an opportunity to be heard as long as you consider fairness in that.
Okay, if you have one more comment, one minute? Okay, that's fine.
Members of the commission, I'd like to know when in the process that gate's going to be addressed formally and that so that, you know, we can, we, the homeowners down there can agree and say that we like that or we don't like it. Because up till now, it's been pushed down, the can's been kicked down the road. So at what point in the process, Roger, does this happen? So it seems like something nobody wants to address as a hard item.
Excuse me, will you please state your name also for the record?
Jim Kingsley.
Are you asking about the design of the gate or what?
Whether it's going to be there or not.
We're adding a condition to make sure it is there.
Okay.
That's what we're doing.
And then is it going to have pedestrian access or just a crash gate?
No. It's a, it's a crash gate.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, great. If there's no other comments, we're going to close the public hearing and enter deliberation of comments by.
The applicant does have the right to do a rebuttal.
Okay. All right, well, let me open it up. I'm a little bit new to being a chair, so. You have a rebuttal, and how much time do you have?
Five minutes.
Oh, okay.
You got five minutes.
I just want to make one comment, and it was actually addressing the neighbors' concern that actually, as this moves forward, we're able to meet with engineering and resolve it further. We've gotten a lot of information from them so far. But anyway, we're very open to the, to the ideas from the neighbors there, so we're in agreement.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Enter deliberation now.
Mr. Chair, I think, just for housekeeping purposes, you need to just address, I think, two things that was brought up, and one was the reference to the variance, and the other one is, I guess, this crash gate. So, you know, whoever makes the motion, I guess, will have to address that.
We can add those two conditions.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, we'll also be adding a condition, or actually it's a recital that is similar to what we added to the prior one that makes reference to the Environmental Quality Act review and the addendum. And I provided that language to Ms. Stottler.
It would be that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the amended, addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, and then there's a code section cited, and it finds that the addendum was prepared consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, and that none of the conditions trigger additional review as set forth in section 15162 exist.
Great.
Then I will make a motion with that added to item K, as well as the reference to the existing conditions of the variance. So I move that upon consideration of tentative tract number 73651, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 73651 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, chapters 16.6 and 16.32 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 69 additional conditions listed, 671 additional.
Correct.
Conditions listed below. And the planning commission hereby makes each and all the following findings a fact as stated below.
Second. Great, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Menuchyan?
Aye.
Chair Protam Yossiyan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have community development department updates.
I have no update.
No update?
No update.
Okay, thank you. Comments from commissioners? Any comments? Okay, well, I do have a comment.
I am sad to say today's going to be my last meeting. I have been away for a few months, working in Armenia on a project in a city in the north of Armenia called Dilijan. We're working on zoning and master planning, historic preservation guidelines that I've been working on. And I'm going to be going back for a few more months. So since I've been going, since I've been away for so long and my, my, my time in the next couple of months is a little bit uncertain, I thought it would be best if I step off the commission so someone could take my place, who will be able to fulfill the duties more while they are here. So I have really enjoyed my time here. I've been on the commission for six years, and working with the, my commissioners here and the staff has been a privilege and an honor for me. And I appreciate the appointment as chair for today, this is my last meeting. And I've been very happy about the work we've been doing here and to the public and the civility and the respect that we've had for each other and to the people who come here. And I hope we continue that, and I'm sure we will, given the commissioners we have here and the quality work that the staff does. So thank you so much, and I'll be around and I'll be back in a few months again. So I'll see you around.
Mr. Yossiyan, I'd like to thank you for all you've done to make walk, bike Glendale more of a reality and all of the work you've done outside of the commission. We will miss you. We've missed you the last couple of months, but wish you the best and hope that we will see you again soon.
Thank you.
And you will continue your great work. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Yossiyan, it was a great pleasure working with you. You've always been the inquisitive, asking questions all the time on our behalf, so it was a pleasure. It was, you're a good team player. So I think we enjoyed the teamwork that we had together for the past six years with you. Armenia will be better for your service in their master planning. So good luck with your new endeavor, and we'll miss you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So with that, we're going to call for adjournment. We have a motion?
Moved.
All right, so moved. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.